Good evening, 6:30 PM, November 24th, 2025. I call the Select Board Regular Business Meeting to order. If you are able, please join me to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being broadcast live on TCTV Cable Station 8 and on the YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on TCTV YouTube channel after the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting this time? Please silence your phones. Just as a reminder, public participation will be limited to citizen input, a maximum of three minutes per person, per the board policy, so to be fair to all. This meeting is governed by the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law and Robert's Rules of Order. This meeting is for the board to conduct its business. We have town employees and board members who need to be places in the morning, as well as residents watching from home may lose interest in meetings that go four hours or more. Thank you. Before we move on, the town resident passed away over the weekend, Mr. Frank Machetti. He was a longtime member of the Planning Board, among other things, so I would ask for a moment of silence at this time for him. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd just like to say a couple of words concerning Mr. Machetti. He was elected to the Planning Board in 1988. He served 37 years. That's a long-term commitment to one committee, board, and for the town, which I'm very thankful for. We are governed by committees and boards, and it only works if we have members of the community that step up and get appointed or run for office, as Frank did so many times. Back in June, one of his sons contacted me, and he said his dad had a medical thing, and so I asked him if it was, you know, how bad it was and if he was going to leave the board, and he said no. He said his dad was going to stay as long as he could, which he did. I went to a planning board meeting just to acknowledge his time on the board, and I had contacted the town clerk, and that's, she said he was elected in 1988. It's a meeting I'm glad I went to. I'm glad I said what I said. And at the end of the meeting, after it was over, I went up to talk with Frank, and I had learned in the meantime that his wife was in the hospital, so I just asked him how she was and wished her well. And he told me, she goes, yeah, he said she was in the hospital for a broken hip or leg or something, but she got there and she was trying to pull the wires and stuff off that they, you know, they hook you up when you go to the hospital. And she was looking for her clothes and calling, trying to bust out of the hospital to go home. And then he followed that with, he said, I had to hire some like orderlies or something to keep an eye on her there, to keep her where she should be. And then he said, with a little smile, he said, I can't wait to get that bill. That was the last time that I saw Frank or talked with him, and I'm glad I went to that meeting. He gave 37 years to the Planning Board. That's a commitment of time, his personal time, time away from his business, his family, et cetera. It's the most important commodity I think we have is time. So it's, and I can't even think how the family is going to handle that with Thanksgiving coming up this Thursday. I just know I'm going to, and I would hope that the town residents and especially the people on the boards and stuff, just remember and be thankful for the time that we had Frank around, rather than dwell on the fact that he's gone and we're never going to see him or talk with him again. Again, that was a heck of a commitment of time. And at that meeting, where I mentioned how long he'd been on there, the Planning Board was talking about they were down two members because you couldn't get people to sign up just for one term, and here you had a guy for almost four decades. So I thank him, and my wishes go out to the family. So on that note, we'll get to the business at hand.
Thank you, Jeff.
First item on the agenda, approval of prior meeting minutes for September 10th, 2025, and November 10th, 2025. So I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 10th, 2025, and November 10th, 2025, as presented.
Mr. Chair, we have some amendments.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion, comments on the minutes?
I have some amendments. On page four, on September 10th, 2025, it talks about the Council of Ryan, and it refers to, agrees that there is a responsibility to still being, however, he pointed out it be she. On the top of the page, on page four, where it says for the chair, it's missing an A in the word chair. And on page six, April Kovar's name is spelled incorrectly, and Jackie Prime's last name is spelled incorrectly. On November 10th, 2025, on those minutes, on the first one, on number three, where it says Select Board, it finds Chair Graves, Graves isn't capitalized, and it should say Vice Chair, and that's on page one. On page 13, again, it refers to, I'm going to, oh, it's referring to me, and it refers to me as a he. It says with the accountant managing multiple tasks, it's supposed to, it says he, but it's supposed to say she. And those are the only ones I've seen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes? I have one other amendment to make on the first set of meeting minutes, September 10th, under Citizen Input, Bob's 06 area, it is not Scout Paul with an S, it is Scout Paul. And I have no others.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none on the motion with the amendments noted. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Vassal? And I vote yes. No executive session minutes. Excuse me. Citizen input, how many do we have? Dale, please come on up.
Yeah, Winchester Street. I just wanted to ask Mr. Ryan, how did his analysis go on the, between the benefits of a P card versus credit cards? And then my other comment was the town website, I can't find anything, especially, it just seems like it's right now, it's a transfer of old information, it's not better. The information that wasn't available before is still not available. It's just a comment. And then, yeah, that was all.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for coming to the Council of Aging meeting.
You're welcome.
Ms. Toth, Gray Road, everybody should have a copy of what I'm submitting to the board. Basically, it's a formal complaint, it's a formal complaint regarding Select Board Vice Chair Candace Graves for failing to adhere to the Capital Improvements Committee Town Bylaw. When a Select Board member knowingly makes decisions in violation of established town bylaws, it raises serious concerns about the integrity of governance. Such actions undermine the authority of the board and call into question how that member can reasonably hold town residents accountable for compliance with other bylaws. This situation suggests an inequitable standard of accountability. For reference, I have included a screenshot of the current verbiage from the Duties and Authorities section of the bylaw. This is not a newly adopted regulation. Department heads have long been required to submit six-year capital improvements plans, but prior administrations have not ensured compliance. Failure to ensure that this information is properly collected and reviewed represents a neglect of responsibility to the town's taxpayers. Additionally, what it actually says, annually collect all proposed capital improvements for the coming six years from the departments on forms designated for that purpose. Establish an annually update of five-year capital improvements plan based on this information. I am coming to you as an individual resident. I am on both advisory and on the Capital Improvements Committee. My concern is we will be knowingly in violation of the town bylaw. Again, I'm stating, I'm sitting here in front of you as an individual. I have a concern, and it's a major concern when I have a Select Board member saying, oh, we can push that off, and two of the voting members of the committee are also town employees. They fill different roles. I don't want, I do not wish to call them out, but when a Select Board member is knowingly violating a bylaw, that raises very big concerns in my mind because it sets examples, and it sets an improper example that needs to be rectified and corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Les.
Anyone else? Town administrative comments?
Sure, thank you. We'll try and be quick. Well, thank you for the question about the credit card, because I actually had an update on that. So ultimately, what, where we ended up with that was that we ended up renewing with American Express, because unfortunately with the credit card, we ran out of time. When we started this venture, we were told by removing the old employees' names from the card, that recurring charges could still continue to hit the American Express account. We then learned a couple of weeks ago, when things, when we began getting late notices, that this was not true. So I then ran up against the clock to make a decision. I did speak to American Express and M&amp;T Bank. They only offered two types of credit cards. One was business card that had, that had a allowable amount of like $30,000, which was way beyond anything we would ever need, and then a smaller card from there. But unfortunately, because I ran out of time, we ended up having to renew with American Express. Now, the good news is, excuse me, the good news is, we've removed, been able to remove all recurring charges except for Vonage. Excuse me, I apologize to the people at home watching this. I have a bit of a cough. Vonage, which is our phone system here that has to be on the credit card because it's under $1,000, and that's just their, you know, company policy, and we have a small yearly Adobe charge for Adobe Pro, which my office does a lot of work, work using. And so that's it, so we managed to remove everything else. So I think it's a positive step going forward. The other thing will be kind of using the card for sort of needs-based items, so there'll be far less usage of this rather liquid asset. So that's where we ended up with that. We need to look at different ways to control health insurance costs. Myself, the superintendent, Woodington's Town Administrator, met to discuss our upcoming renewals with NFP, who is all of our consultants, and NFP will likely be coming out to speak to the board soon, but we're all looking at unfavorable renewals across the board in the health insurance market. And so we'll be presenting more information to the board as time goes on. Participated in the Capital Improvement Committee meeting last Wednesday, where we looked at introducing some capital templates that we're going to, we're going to work more on for next year. And so it was a very positive meeting, and I was happy to be a part of that. I attended the Massachusetts Managers Association Fall Conference. I mentioned to the board previously that they had asked me to speak about my contract negotiation with this town, or my personal contract, because it was such a positive experience, so just a brief shout out to Mr. May and Mr. Toth for that experience. It got around to the Managers Association, and so I was asked to speak a little about that. So it just, I guess, shows to the professionalism of this board, so I just wanted to point that out. And it was also a very useful conference for getting an update on changing municipal laws that are being proposed currently. I just wanted to end my report by mentioning some upcoming events at the library in the Council on Aging. The stitching group is finishing up their 12 ornaments this week, and we'll be decorating a small tree at the library. December 3rd, a volunteer group will be decorating for the holidays at the Council on Aging. December 10th, there will be an ugly sweater holiday lunch at the Council on Aging. And December 17th, there will be a holiday dance party at the Council on Aging, and I heard that Jeff Bennett is going to be dancing there. So everyone come and watch. And that's it for my report.
Sell tickets to that.
Yeah.
I might not be a no-show, but you'll sell a lot of tickets.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. Under no business, we have no introduction new employees. We have no appointments to be made.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? We have the Animal Control Officer here, and I'd like her to get home to her family as soon as possible. So I was wondering if the board would entertain taking the bylaw suggestion amendment out of order?
If there's no objection, I will, as Chair, move item G up to the next item for discussion in front of C. Do we know? One, please.
Thank you. So I'm really pleased to be here today to present this, these potential additions to the bylaw to you guys. I only had a couple of days to prepare. I just found out late last week that you would hear this. So I want to tell you that what we wanted to do was present potential changes to the bylaws. The purpose would be to establish protocols for violations that cannot be cited under the current laws. And this is for Chapter 133 of the Templeton bylaws. And you'll have to excuse my first objective, to clarify public nuisance and redefine the definition of nuisance dog. We're not redefining the definition, but we'd like to add nuisance animal. So the three objectives are to add nuisance animal to the bylaw, the definition of, to establish violation for livestock issues, and to clarify impound procedures, kind of like adding some more tools to our toolbox, shall we say, so we can be more effective in the town. And I'll start with saying that in Templeton, Chapter 133-2, it describes the definition of nuisance dog as Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 136A definition. And I'll read that to you. A nuisance dog is a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or, two, by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior destructive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or, three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not a greatly grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. And that's, that's the definition of nuisance dog. And when we talk about Mass General Law, Chapter 140, it's really all about dogs, 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 not animals. There's a vague, the little chapter, section about rabies vaccinations for cats and ferrets and dogs, but otherwise, it just, it's about dogs. So we wanted to add a nuisance animal category describing the behaviors for an animal. So we're all-inclusive, all animals can join in this club, okay? Cows, horses, cats, goats, everybody. Instead of just saying that it's a nuisance dog, it would be a nuisance animal. And saying that an owner or keeper may not permit an animal to be a nuisance animal. And a nuisance animal definition starts out the same as nuisance dog, being that an animal by an excessive noise or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or by excessive disturbance causing damage or interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior destructive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, but adding some animal nuisance behaviors, including, but not limited to, one, molesting or attacking persons, animals, or vehicles without provocation, two, repeated trespassing on public or private property, including school grounds, three, repeatedly being found at large outside of confinement or off restraint, four, causing offensive odors through accumulated waste or other reason that is detectable from the public way, any right-of-way, or adjoining properties, five, barking, whining, howling, or other noises natural to such animal species in an excessive, continuous, or untimely fashion, where such noise is plainly audible from the building premises or vehicle housing said animal, and such noise is continuous for 10 minutes of or more, and I'll get back to the timeframe there, so as to disturb the peace or otherwise be destructive, disruptive to any person's quiet enjoyment of property, comfort, or repose. The reason that we wanted the time limit on there, the 10 minutes or more, is because, you know, when dogs bark, they'll bark for hours, they'll bark all day long. People, when they call, they say that this dog's been barking for hours out in the yard, and by the time we get there, we, we need something to verify. We never cite people on hearsay. Somebody says their dog is barking continuously, we have to prove it. So having that timeframe of 10 to 15 minutes is very important, so we can go and verify that, yes, this animal has been continuously barking for 10 or 15 minutes, whatever you guys decide the time limit would be. Continuing on, definition six would be obstructing any public way or private way or distracting drivers upon the public way, and seven, any other circumstances affecting the health or safety of the public or other animals as determined by an animal control officer or the Board of Health. So that is the definitions, you know, that we suggest for a nuisance animal. We also have had concerns about establishing violations for livestock issues, and a lot of this does, but we can simply add another sentence for, under the category of foul or livestock at large or grazing the streets, something that says, something that says something like this, no person owning or having the care of domestic fowl or of goat, sheep, swine, horse, oxen, cows, or other grazing animals shall permit or suffer the same to go at large or graze in any street or public place, or go upon any sidewalk in any street or private property. So those, that I've just said right there are two of the objectives, to add nuisance animal to the definitions in Chapter 133, and establishing violations for livestock issues. There's one more area of clarifying impound procedures, but I wonder if you guys have any questions about that, that I've said so far?
I have two things off the top of my head regarding the time of a dog barking or any other animal.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd have to look at the, I know there's Mass General Law on noise and how it's, I think it's 10:00 PM up until 10:00 PM before certain things.
Yeah.
So I would like to see the, I'd like to look at the wordage of that.
Yeah, they don't put a time limit on it. They do have hours between the hours of.
So, you know, saying that dogs have been barking for more than 15 minutes, but I have, I don't know, whatever going on for half an hour that's not a dog barking, I just, I just like to, I have to look at that and see what it says. And the other thing is concerning anything besides a dog, like sheep, horses, that, again, this would be something I would have to look at and compare, because I believe the field driver is still on Mass General Law, and actually this town, there's still some towns, I believe, that have it on the books, have the position. We did up until, I don't know, 2011, 12, somewhere around there. But that position in that law deals with at-large, and it's left over from when anybody, everybody just about, you know, had a milk cow or something like that. And if they were found on the town common, for instance, or just on the side of the road, the field driver could take them, bring them home, and it describes, if he feeds them and stuff, he's entitled to collect reimbursement from the owner of said, said animal.
Okay.
I would like to take this, your proposal, your advisement, and compare it with.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that at all. Yeah.
Just to look at that. I'm almost positive field driver is still, but I'd like to check that to see, it's one of them things that's, you know, on the books, and it's like, why is that still, it's just there because it's, they just never.
Yeah, the problem that we're having is like, yeah, if animals, if a goat or whatever gets loose, we have no, there's nothing we can do. What we had been doing in the past was if an animal deposited, went to the bathroom on somebody else's property, we can, we cite them under the poop law here. We can do better than that, you know? We can put something on the books that protects, you know, private property owners for the damages that they cause. And, well, I can move on to the violations because that's important, too, with that, the impound procedures, interestingly enough, in the Templeton bylaw, Chapter 133-7H, they refer to Mass General Law 140, Section 151, and with 151A, for impoundment fees and redemption. So there's nothing in the bylaw itself, it says we refer to that, and that section refers back to the town. It says the fees are determined by the city or town, so there's nothing in the bylaw about impoundment fees. There's nothing. So our suggestions are, I will say, so under impoundment is for, it's A, B, and C. A, any animal found at large or determined to be a public nuisance, nuisance animal or nuisance dog may be taken by animal control officers, Board of Health agents, or police officers impounded and confined in a humane manner. B, an animal control officer with custody of an impounded or stray animal shall make a reasonable attempt to contact the owner of such animal if the owner can be identified. And a lot of this is in Mass General Law as well. C, an animal control officer or veterinarian may, in its sole discretion, administer veterinary care to sick or injured animals impounded under subsection A. If the owner of the animal can be identified, the owner shall be responsible for payment of such veterinary expenses. D, if the owner of an animal impounded under subsection A has not reclaimed it within seven days of the date of impoundment or any lesser minimum period permitted by the general laws of the Commonwealth, an animal control officer may release the animal for adoption or humanely euthanize the animal. If a licensed veterinarian states in writing that the animal is in significant pain and has no reasonable chance of recovering or having a good quality of life, the animal may be humanely euthanized at any time. The town shall not be liable for any disposition of animals in accordance with this section. And for redemption fees, one, other, except as otherwise provided in this chapter, the owner of any impounded animal may redeem the animal upon payment to the town of the following. A, an impound fee of thirty dollars for each animal. B, a boarding fee of fifteen dollars per animal every twenty-four hour cycle. C, all veterinary charges, drugs, and other medical expenses. And D, proof of up-to-date rabies vaccination and follow-up licensing. And then for under violations, an owner or keeper of an animal covered by this section that allows such animal to become a public nuisance nuisance animal or nuisance dog, including but not limited to failure to properly restrain or confine such animal, may be fined. And those violations wouldn't, wouldn't change. The first offense violation in Templeton is a hundred dollars. The second offense is a hundred and fifty, and the third is three hundred. So wrapping it up, we're asking for this so that we can have broader, clearer regulations, and more effective regulations, where we have an end result of a, a possible citation for some of these violations. It helps us to help residents resolve conflicts. Because if we say there's a hefty hundred dollar first offense, Templeton fine coming your way, let's resolve this issue, fix the fence, instead, instead of paying the citation. Do that, you know, resolve these conflicts, knowing that there's a citation coming. So I guess that's pretty much all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may. Well, I think I understand the spirit and can, and intent. Again, I would have to take this under advisement. There is still in the books, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, right to farm rules and regulations. The Town of Templeton is a right to farm community. This directly violates the right to farm bylaw that we have. Especially, especially with all of the livestock and farm animals listed and identified. Goats in specific are Houdinis, they will get out.
Yeah.
I understand what we're doing.
Yeah. But how does it violate, if I may, how does it violate?
It's a right to farm community.
Of the animals escape and go on private property. Isn't the right to farm still keeping your animals confined on your property?
But animals will escape.
Right, but if they do
If you finish, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Nowhere in a right to farm do you have the authority to seize or euthanize an animal. I take personal exemption to that. I'm also looking, we're taking wordage from Springfield, Waltham, New Bedford bylaws, not comparing communities to the Town of Templeton. Populations nowhere near the same. We're talking cities, not rural communities. And then we're coming up with a list of redemption fees.
Yeah.
Where do these fees get paid, where do they get deposited?
Yeah.
That is not specified.
Yeah, this is rough draft.
So I understand, but these are questions that I would need answers to.
Do you want me to answer that part about the redemption fees? Because that, the impound fee, the pickup fee goes directly to animal control. That's our only, that's the only way that we make money, other, other than fundraising. We don't
Animal control is a function of the Winchendon Police Department, correct?
Winchendon and Templeton, yeah.
I will take this offline with you. Animal control is a function of the Winchendon Police Department.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Yes. So I appreciate the animal control officer bringing this to our attention. We have to remember she's not a lawyer.
Nope, I understand.
I think, I think she's, you know, she's probably not an expert in right to farm communities, nor am I. So I think she's trying to give us some, you know, good starting point, because I think there, there are gaps that at least some of this stuff might make sense. And yeah, we might need to adjust it via the, um, right to farm and, and, you know, tweak other provisions. But I think if the board is interested in this, um, after all the questions have been answered, we run this by town council, and town council will help us with some of the more legalistic concerns like right to farm and, you know, where the money goes and, and, you know, what appropriate fees are and how, how some of this stuff meshes with our bylaw.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The couple of concerns that I have under your, the definitions, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-seven A, um, under the animal nuisance behavior included but not limited to, uh, the molesting or attacking persons, I believe that attacking persons would bring it under the dangerous dog. So that brings it out of the nuisance rather than as a nuisance dog. It brings it into the dangerous dog area rather than leaving it a nuisance, if I remember the law correctly.
Well, yeah, when you have a nuisance or dangerous dog hearing, you're determining that in the hearing itself.
Right, but they're two different laws, I believe, two different sections of the law with different criteria.
It's on, well, it's under the same chapter.
Right, I'm just saying that from my memory, it was under different ones. And as Mr. Toth referenced too, number four in that list, causing offensive odors through accumulated waste and other, that in a right to farm community goes out the window.
Uh huh, okay.
Have smells.
Yeah, yes. Farms have smells, tractors, noises, and, uh, by rights, by right.
Yeah, but where does it go? That's why I'm saying, you know, how, we've had incidences where there have been um, problems with the Board of Health and animals. And, you know,
Right, but I mean, that, well, if it's a farm and it had, and there are smells, I believe that's, you know, talked about in the right to farm directly.
And what if it's not? What if it's not a farm, though?
It's a homestead, you mean?
That's, that's why Yeah.
And is right, is the right to farm, is it dealing mostly with commercial farmers? Or are we talking about just backyard?
Backyard.
Backyard farmers.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume there's a way, working with legal counsel, so that the farmers get all of their rights in a right to farm community, and, and you'd be able to enforce things we'd want to enforce. I think that's a, I think that's a question for legal counsel.
Yeah, I mean, I know, like I said, this is just thoughts that we had as animal control when things that have happened in the past that we've not been able to resolve. And by having just, um, the nuisance dog category and not extending it to other animals has been a deterrent for
Well, I, I can understand, I can understand that idea in a sense.
Yes.
But, you know, I, I think we're, you know, we want to be sure, and, and to James's point, running it through legal counsel, that we're not bumping into or incorporating terms from other laws in this write-up.
This is the first time I've ever had to present anything like this to, and done it myself. And like I said, so yeah, I mean, if it's something that we can move forward on and maybe discuss and figure out the right wording for things to make everybody happy, it would be important for us, I think, to just at least establish a nuisance animal and maybe regs for, um, animals that get loose off the property.
Violation of the right to farm. If you read, if you read the right to farm definition.
So it allows animals to get loose and go on other people's property whenever they want? So that's why, so I'm just looking at the other side of it, for the people that have the problem with the animals get going on their property. What kind of resolution is there for them?
Um, that's when you call animal control, animal control.
And we can't do anything about it.
And so I think that's the point that she's trying to make, is that there are limitations right now in our bylaws. And I've only, I only glanced them over, but they essentially refers to dogs. And so any other animal, I think she's trying, her suggestion is that we add some language that gives them the authority to deal with other animals.
So if, this is a, a good starting point, something to take under advisement. Like I said, I would like to, I would have to go back and look at the, uh, the laws that the town has accepted regarding the field driver situation and, and how this would line up with some of what, what's in here. I believe it lines up with, you know, more with the, uh, right to farm bylaw. Because as I said, this, and it goes, I know it's left over from way back when.
Well, I do appreciate you guys listening to me about this, because
I appreciate it.
We want to make it easier for everybody now and for the future.
If the board would like, um, they can direct me to work with town council on this and bring you back recommendations.
For the rest of the board.
I mean, I think it would be unnecessary if you read the right to farm and it's laid out.
You know, I, I know I am going to, uh, research, uh, Mass General Law concerning noise, just in general.
I also know, um,
The field driver issue and a few other things.
There's, there has been incidences where there's been livestock loose that A C O uh, didn't show because they were after hours, but in the bylaws is
Yeah, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but, uh, Templeton tried, uh, it was brought forward by the Board of Health, really, uh, at the town meeting, a roost to bylaw on noise and this and that. And, um, it went down so hard and fast.
Yeah, I was there, I saw that, yeah.
Under the, under the argument of, uh, by the farmer law.
Yep.
So, uh, just, just so you're aware
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, I was, I saw that, yeah.
Some of this is probably an, an uphill path, but it is a starting point. Uh, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And the information.
Okay.
And just use it and we can decide.
I think, what, if anything, too, there's nothing in here about the impounding and redemption fees, nothing. So you could
That would be a, a thing of where the fees are going.
Yeah.
You know, if it happens in this town or that town, general fund revenue or revolving fund, to go in there to buy the food and stuff to take care of the animals that get locked up in the facility. I mean, that's, you know, there's got to be that.
Okay.
But it, it's, it's a starting point, it's ideas, and, uh, it gives us something to look at.
Uh huh.
Discuss.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, back to the agenda. The next item is, is item C, and it's kind of lines up with, uh, item F, with the Select Board Operating Policy Update, but I'll just give a, a on the, uh, all boards meetings. This started in, uh, back in two thousand sixteen. It came from the Select Board. And the first one, uh, first couple were, um, December two thousand sixteen, and it was held at the Camelot, uh, when that was open and the Royas ran it. And I was on the advisory committee at the time, and it was the first one. And almost everybody on all the committees and commissions and boards selected and appointed alike were there. There was, uh, kind of a relaxed roundtable discussion on how people think this worked and that worked and, and so on and so forth. The next one happened in January of two thousand eighteen at the Camelot. It was still well-attended, not as good as the first one, but, um, you know, everybody shows up for the first thing when it's new. And then the next year, they said, well, yeah, we talked a lot, but we didn't, you know, do a lot, much. And the next one was in, uh, November of eighteen, and again, it was at the Camelot. And again, the attendance went down a little bit, again, for the previous reasons. You go there, you discuss stuff, and it started to have the makings of my, my, my view of it, my opinion, was kind of like a dog and pony show. You go in there, you know, talk about this and that, but this, it really wasn't a lot that was coming out of it. The next one was in December twenty twenty-two, and this one, it went to, uh, the Senior Center. Uh, I went to that one. And maybe half, two-thirds of the boards and commissions were represented by maybe one person or two people. Again, it was a roundtable discussion, um, about, you know, what the boards are doing, what they do, what they, you know, wanted to see, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And then there was one, um, January twenty twenty-four. I didn't go to that one. I, I understand it was, again, it's, the attendance has been going down, down, and down. Because one, it was just another meeting to go to. This board cannot, you know, can't force anybody to go to the meetings, but the elected boards that you have, especially if, if they want to show up, they want to show up. They already have their, their duties, statues, uh, and things to get done by, by their elected position. So it's just something that I think has maybe run its course and it's, um, it just hasn't amounted to, I think, what the original intent was. And again, if you go there and it's just a roundtable discussion, and the biggest thing that's happening is, is, you know, some slices of pizza or coffee or whatever, you know, sitting over there. And that's just what it turns into. I, I, Mr. Toth has been to a few, I don't know what his thought, but I'm, uh, I'm just not sure that it's, uh, it's a worthwhile event. If, you know, boards of committees, they have something to input, they, they want to work on this or that. And just ask the on the agenda and come to a meeting and we have joint meetings and maybe get something done. Mr. Toth is
I think you summed it up nicely, Jeff. The first one was more of a state of the union and where we were at, what was done, kind of a, what we were looking forward to. And then it morphed into a, uh, you know, where, where were we going, but it really never had a direction, would be the best way I can describe it. And yeah, the Camelot, the first one at Camelot was very well-attended. That room was packed.
And then it's, it's just kind of petered out.
Mrs. Chair, I have a different perspective. Being on the board that I was in the past, um, I got a lot out of it, even if it was not like a big, a lot of people. The people that I got a lot out of it were fellow chairs. Um, it got me, um, ability to meet di- different, um, boards and committees that I normally would not have the ability to meet. And, um, and, um, and those chairs, that's usually what you see, a chair, a vice chair, um, a few of the members. So I made connections for the board that I was on. So, um, there were many times where, when I went there, they would talk to me, like, you know, you have that casual time where you can talk. And so, um, I, like I said, I found it very beneficial being, um, being on my situation, um, back in the day. Um, I would have never had the opportunity to meet any of them for the other boards and to be able to have those conversations of how can, how can, um, I help you? How can you help us? You know, um, the relationships, like Culture Cult, I would have never met, um, anybody on there. I wasn't involved with them. Um, and at the time, I wasn't in, um, the actual building, um, to meet anybody. And so I made a lot of connections with them, um, and learned a lot of stuff about, about that, which helped, um, the board I was in. I, I met, um, you know, various other boards and understood what they do. And it gave me ability to, to, um, the superintendent was there at the time. This would only be given my ability to do on a meeting like that, um, to ask some questions about various things that came up in, in, um, the board I was, the commission I was in, to ask the, um, various things that came up in in the board I was, the commission I was in, to ask the the superintendent some questions. I would have never had the ability or the select board members, various members, I could ask questions. You know, if I had a concern or something, if it was something that I would have to be on your agenda, come to to bring it for it and it might be something casual. I just felt it very beneficial that I could get some of these questions or make these connections. That's how I felt that it was more like. I know that a lot of people, you know, think it's just a task and come together. But, you know, some people thought we should maybe put it in the beginning in the summer, like in a July or August situation, we might get more people. Because of the holidays and stuff could be the reason why. And so a lot of people don't want to go out, but I found it beneficial for what I was on and it helped me in my board, in my commission, make some connections, you know. That's just my perspective. That's that's all.
I'll just say that I don't know if it was two thousand sixteen or eighteen, but I went to well, one of those that was over at Camelot, one of the first couple. I was on advisory with you with the chair, I believe, at the time. And I I think the the biggest benefit that I saw to that meeting was that people got to air their thoughts. But I don't think it went anywhere. I think it just gave the people that that went the opportunity to either grieve or request or discuss the problem or discuss this. But then I didn't see it go anywhere for the rest of the year. So I didn't go to the next one.
That's that's what I I got from over the years of the ones that we've had and you know, but but I wanted to hear what the council engaging is is about or anything that's going on, senior, I just go to that meeting. The same thing with all the other other committees and boards. You can you find out who the chair is, you can try to come down, talk with them, they might talk, boom. You can go to their meetings. After they adjourn, you you know, chat with them. Find out things that way. But again, it's it's just gone into, it's another meeting to go to where not much action comes out of it. Yeah, you get to say, talk about this, that and the other, but as far as it resulting in anything, there's been like no follow up and no votes. I didn't find limits of, you know, what was talked about, this, that. So again, that's that's my perspective on it, my view that the ones that I went to. The first one, the first year, first two, maybe. There was a lot of interest and, you know, I think people thought they'd go in there and there's going to be something come out of it. But then you compare the budget message and the budget books that did for fiscal eighteen, when they started going into the binder with a lot of backup materials, a lot of information in there. But again, this wasn't that that follow up, if you will, on on stuff and I I believe that's why it just went downhill as far as attendance was. Want to know what other boards do, other things do, committees, you can just go to them. Sometimes I think I got more out of watching a recording of T C T V, but that's just my thoughts on it. It is in our policy to have that. That's why I said it kind of goes in there with it. So when we get to that, if board wants to keep it, we'll keep it and then schedule a meeting. In in event, December and January. Then it's just a pick a date and and a place. It's last few has been at the senior center. I just wanted to hear the board's thoughts on that.
Chair, if memory serves me correctly, the two thousand twenty-two one took the place of our regularly scheduled board meeting.
I think it might have taken the place of.
I think it did.
Yeah.
And so then there is the few years where we were remote, so there wasn't. There's nothing else.
I was just going to say to you, I was just thinking. It's also, I think, I mean, we had that workshop and I was just thinking, it just popped in my head that this, I mean, if we got rid of it, we get rid of it, but if we kept it, we could use it in an opportunity to use it like we did with our workshop that we just did with 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 the boards, with us, you know. It's just a thought. If it was, it was structured a little different, it might have had a different outcome. And like I said, you can, you can, you can go to meetings and stuff and follow through, but like I wouldn't have known that I needed to meet cultural council or to walk, like they aren't on television or anything or to get in touch with them. I wouldn't have known any of that if I wouldn't have went to the meeting. So that's.
Next item is D. This is the school group debt exclusion. The article was at the special town meeting on the twelfth, it passed. So we need to have a a ballot question, which means we have to have a special election. And there's timeframes in there to meet by Mass General Law. There's also it's a ninety day window, but the the sooner that it's done, the sooner M S B A will know about it. Because a year ago, there were seventy projects put in front of M S B A. And this past October twenty twenty-five, there were twenty-one chosen and Narragansett was one and the election, the ballot question is going to be the determining factor on whether that goes forward or not. Historically, contingent articles pass at town meeting and they fail at the ballot. So the work for this has really begun. But first we have to have a decide on the the election date. The place is pretty much the same and the time is in our bylaw for when the polls and stuff will be open. Mr. Administrator, have anything?
Yeah, I would just I would just note that first you'd, if the board so wishes to send the debt exclusion to the to a ballot, you first want a motion to to do so and the the exact language that you want to use is in is in the memo that I wrote and it is in your packet. And then after that, assuming the board votes in the affirmative, then that's the suggested date by the superintendent was January sixth and that that has to do with availability of the space for for the the vote, because they they do other things with that space, different.
Yeah, he was superintendent and I chatted with him about that and that was the thing he 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 mentioned. He it's in the high school gym, the one down in the back where we've generally voted on the past few years. And so it's it's in the middle of the winter, it's like basketball season and stuff and that was that Tuesday. There's there's nothing going on there. So in our our election hours are from eleven A M till seven P M. So and then once the polls go, if you're in line at seven, you're supposed to be able to get the vote. So the election could like go till, they could be there till eight or a little past it. So that's that's the night, the two, the sixth is, there's nothing going on. So that would be a date. It's it's a little out there, but we we do have a timeframe. We do have a couple of holidays. You know, there's a seven day and a thirty-five day window and there's the ninety day window when you must have the the election, the ballot question put to the people at the close of the special town meeting.
And the the superintendent also has to let the M S B A know that this has passed or not by the end of January as well. So it's a good moment to note that sometimes towns are criticized for the timing in which they hold these elections with these ballot questions. And I just want to reiterate what the chair was just saying for the public and that this is why January election might happen is because of the timing of M S B A, the timing of the fall town meeting and then the requirements to get this voted on. Because in the past, you know, people have wondered, well, why did it happen in January? No one's paying attention in January. It's not near any election. It's right after the holidays. Well, this is why. We're not in control of the timeframe, unfortunately.
So regarding this, and again, it it involves the town of Templeton not having to pay the entire amount. There's money that's come from the M S B A in the form of a grant. It's the same thing that was done for the elementary school. The town meeting voted to approve, borrow forty-seven million. The project total is forty-five million and some change and the amount from M S B A was twenty-two million and change. So it's a chunk of money, you know, you don't want to leave sitting on the table and having to pay the whole the whole thing. It is a it is a chunk, but you know, if you got to pay five million back, that's better than paying nine or more. It's just it's just the thing. So
Mr. Chair.
I would make a motion, I move that a special town election be called on Tuesday before Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-six, and for the following question be placed on said warrant. The town of Templeton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of prop- Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Narragansett Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs related to the Narragansett Regional High School full roof replacement project located at four sixty Baldwinville Road, Baldwinville, Mass and the Narragansett Regional Middle School Partial Roof Replacement Project located at four sixty-four Baldwinville Road. Actually, I will back up. The town of Templeton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Narragansett Regional School District for the purpose of paying the costs related to the Narragansett Regional High School Full Roof Replacement Project located at four sixty Baldwinville Road, Templeton, Massachusetts and the Narragansett Regional Middle School Partial Roof Replacement Project located at four sixty-four Baldwinville Road, Templeton, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I just question, new guy in town. I I've seen how it's written Baldwinville sometimes. So is it appropriate to cross that out? Because this language was given to us from either council or the school. So I I just, I'm concerned because M S B A is persnickety and
But it's the town of Templeton.
Oh, I know that. I know what the seal says, but.
So and there is no town of Baldwinville.
I agree, but I I do believe.
Baldwinville that is approving the borrowing.
I know, but what's the address via the U S P S zip code and stuff like that? That's what I, that's that's what this is saying. Because the town of Temple, shallow town of Templeton be allowed to exempt. So that's the town. So if you think it should be Templeton, hey, you've lived here. I haven't, but I just want to make, just want to make sure with the board that that's the right move to cross that out.
I believe it, Mr. Chair, I believe the address might be Baldwinville, Mass. Maybe the zip code is different. I think we could check on that.
And I know the state, they have signs on.
I know, I might have too.
You know, Baldwinville, you know, town of Baldwinville, but it is there's a village of Baldwinville, but there's not a town of Baldwinville.
But it would be their P O box, I mean, their their street address according to the U S Postal Service would be the address we'd be using.
So when I go to Google.
If I may, okay, you're the same place I am.
Yeah, and so it says Baldwinville.
Is their is their address?
It says four sixty-two Baldwinville Road, Baldwinville, Mass, oh, one, four, three, six.
And then on their website, the school is also using Baldwinville, Mass. So I I think that's a U S P S thing.
Oh, yeah, it's because there's four zip codes in this.
Right. So that's so that's why this.
It's about the address of the roofs.
Yeah.
They're on the two buildings.
I I would recommend using Baldwinville. I agree. It's definitely all the town of Templeton, Templeton Pride, but I think that's the the address.
Yeah. I think I have to.
I will amend my motion to have Baldwinville, Mass for the high school roof and Baldwinville, Mass for the middle school partial roof.
I'll second that also.
Seconded by Mr. May. Any more discussion? Hearing none on the motion and the article. Mr. May, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Thoth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Next item is item E, Scout Hall bid approval. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our poor friends at T C T V, good friends sitting to my right, have have languished in this in this room for for a long time and but finally we got the bids out to 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 fix the wonderful Scout Hall. I did personally solicit, let's see, the four or five contractors that have done work for you in the past. I didn't just rely on bidding requirements of posting it here, there and everywhere I did try and try and generate interest. Unfortunately, we only received one bid from La Rochelle Construction, who's been doing a good amount of work around town. The good news is that it came in and about what was quoted to us from the adjuster who did the work for our insurance company to to analyze the damages and tell us how much it should be. Their quote came in about eighty thousand nine hundred and then the the contractor quote bid on the project came in at eighty-four thousand five hundred. So between that and our deductible, we'll have to come up with a little bit more money. But, you know, I'm I'm going to reach out, assuming the board approves, allows me to enter into a contract with La Rochelle, I I will reach out to them and negotiate a final price with them. They don't have to change their price, but I I can I can do my best. And I've also reached out to the adjuster in hopes that I can push him on, you know, agreeing to give the insurance company a little more money for this project. But worst case scenario, we'll have to, we'll have to come up with, I think we have a five thousand dollar deductible plus this is about four thousand more than what the insurance company is saying they're going to give us. But so it's it's close and it was the only bid. The other option is we go back out to bid and we, you know, delay the project, you know, further because, you know, we need probably need a month and a half or so to put it back out advertised, try and solicit some interest. So it's so I would suggest moving forward with this, but it's the prerogative of the the board. And if you'd like me to move forward with this to vote to authorize me to sign a contract with La Rochelle Construction to begin work on Scout Hall. I hear you over there.
So I would move for the board to allow the town administrator to pursue a contract with La Rochelle Construction and for the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair, if I may, to the town administrator.
Yes, sir.
Do we know if Buildings and Grounds has been into there and how the building is holding up with the current weather?
Well, that's a very good question. I do not have the answer to that, so I will get you that answer tomorrow and I will email it out to the board.
Appreciate that, sir.
Got it.
Anything further? Hearing done on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, yes. Next item is Item F. The Select Board Operating Policy Updates, Changes, Et cetera.
I apologize. My name is Nick Step, and I think this is for the board to start discussion on. I know some of you had submitted, so I think that's probably a good, good way, place to start.
The, the first thing that I noticed is the policy still has the days of our meetings listed as second and fourth on Wednesdays. Even though on October twenty-seventh, the board voted for Option B, for our meeting schedule to be Mondays. And the various dates were listed. So the only thing we got that would be, and I believe that's where the action item tracker thing came, came about when the board votes to change something or move something forward or table it. That was the purpose of that, to keep track of it. And the person in charge of doing that would be, is, is the vice chair. But would watch to see if the, like, a policy changed, the meeting dates, times would change, or if something was tabled. And was like the, the next agenda, the next agenda, or whenever. It would be a reminder, like, we voted to do this. We need to, you know, have that on the agenda, or we need to change this or update this. So and I saw one of the, in the meeting packet, one of the proposed changes was the, to change that information. But it should have already been done. So I, I don't see the need to vote on that because it's, we've already voted on it. It just hasn't been changed in the policy that's on, that's online. Again, we did that back on the twenty-seventh of October. So it should not, no longer say the second and fourth Wednesday. It should just be the Mondays. It's not every other Monday, but it's business meetings held on, on Mondays at, you know, according to the schedule. And this, this policy, we've discussed changes and actually done changes in the past few months. So as far as following the policy of, before we change a policy or in any way to, they discussed it at least one meeting. So that criteria has been met over the summer. Been discussed a few times. And actually, some amendments have been, been made, including our meeting, a meeting schedule. So I know the vice chair submitted some things, I believe. And I submitted changes. I don't know if any other board member did, or if it's not anything. I sent it electronically to the members. And then the executive assisted in the office, sent it out and put it there for pickup today. We have agenda requests and discussion materials to change that from noon on Wednesday to one P M. on the Monday preceding the next regular business meeting. Do, do away with, from if a formal action is required, defer placement of items upon the agenda to, to get rid of that. And the availability of a meeting packet would go from four thirty on, on Wednesday, on Thursday, to one P M. on Wednesday, preceding the regular business meeting. And one P M. on the seventh day preceding any special meeting. To add the dog hearings, all dog hearings will be held as a standalone special select board meeting. We agreed to that, a consensus, following a previous dog hearing. And the action item tracker will be tabular in format, crossing out, and items will be added by vote or consensus of the board or town administrator to add in sequence number, action to be taken, purpose date, et cetera. So, and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we just take it from the first one from yours, your changes, and just go through the, there's not many change pages? And then just go through each page? So if you, you had suggested on page two, you wanted to add the B section and read that, and then go and see if anybody wants to go with that or not? And then go through the pages with yours? And then, I think I have a couple of different pages than you, only a few. And then we can.
So under, my proposal would be, starting on page two, is change the preparation of the meeting and agenda and packet to just agenda procedures. In conjunction, I would strike out on page three, agenda requests, discussion materials. Completely. It would just be agenda procedures. The responsibility for coordinating and planning the meeting agenda is that of the town administrator. Each of the board members and town administrator may place items on the agenda. The town administrator, in consultation with the chair, shall schedule realistic time period for each appointment, interview, conference, or other scheduled items of business. All items for the agenda must be submitted to the town administrator by three P M. Thursdays preceding the meeting, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays not to be counted. Items of emergency or strictly routine nature that develop after closing of the agenda may be considered and added under topics not anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours in advance. That is in line with the Open Meeting Law.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I have a question. Would the Thursday be, like, so today's meeting, and say it wasn't a holiday, would their packet have to be this Thursday by three o'clock? Or would it be the following Thursdays for us to, to put in stuff?
So our next meeting is the December eighth?
Right.
So it would be the following, the Thursday before that Monday meeting.
I would like to suggest that we make it, I, I think that when we sit here and do our meeting, that we have an idea in the next day or two, what we should want on our agenda. And it should be this coming Thursday, I mean, granted, it's a holiday, if it wasn't. And if it wasn't a holiday, obviously, the next regular business day, which would be Tu-, would be Tuesday at three o'clock. This would give the staff an ability to get the packet and information, even though we could still be giving them information. And then the only other thing that I would suggest is putting in a guideline to if we have no, we've already went through this, have no staff, have nobody in our office that in the, in that event, that the chair or whoever the chair designees out of the select board would be able to make the preparation of the packet. Because then we would be right back where we started if we have lost staff again.
Be, by, by statute and the open meeting law, the, the agenda is already the realm of the, the chair, of any board or committee. It's they're responsible for the agenda, the agenda content, the posting of it in, in the place where it's supposed to be. Since we have a, a town administrator, then the board agrees to transport that authority in a sense to the town administrator. But the, the responsibility, according to the open meeting law, rests on the chair. So if town administrator, you know, quit, or we fire him, or whatever.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hypothetically.
I'm just saying, if. Then you just fall back to the statute. That's, that's, that's how it goes.
And for the subject on when we give it in?
And regarding the packet, the packet is an ongoing thing. It's, I don't believe everything is just dumped at the last minute. And I, I trust with the staff that you could submit something up till three P M. on a Thursday, and it could be on the agenda and in the packet. The agenda's got to be posted by no later than six thirty on a Thursday to meet the open meeting law for a Monday meeting at six thirty.
Mr. Chair.
Not counting the weekends and so forth. And if we start, we put the next Monday a week before, and somebody comes in on a Tuesday, you're telling them, you've got to wait three weeks before you can, you know, be on a meeting or have your item, the stuff.
Yeah, so while, while we're on that topic, to your point, I, I've already had a situation. It was the Royalston, the Royalston Cannabis people. That, that was already, I've already had at least one incident where someone wanted to be on the agenda kind of late in the game. Then, you know, Mr. Toth, I think, coined the term in a previous meeting. We don't want rules for rules' sake. The natural cutoff for setting the, the agenda is the day that, that we're going to make the packets. You know, if, if someone needs something and needs to address the board, or there's, you know, grant deadline or what have you. If, if I can get it on the agenda with the chair's permission, or I can research it in time to guide the board, I definitely don't want to be, I don't, I definitely don't want my hands to be tied and have to tell someone sorry. You know, you have to wait till the next meeting when, you know, there's several days before the next meeting, because that's the first question they're going to ask. And a lot of times, you know, when I was in Salisbury, a lot of, a lot of the people who would be sort of last minute, last minute, would be vendors downtown trying to get their license approved before the board. And so we don't want to look, we don't want to look like we're, you know, not agreeable or, you know. I, I don't want it to sit there, like, let's say we did decide the agenda has to be set for, for the Monday before. I, I don't want it to sit there on a Tuesday and say, sorry, agenda's set, I can't, can't help you. And then I have to wait almost three weeks to, to see you. So the, the natural cutoff point is for the agenda, you know, we can get, we can get things on there as long as I can, you know, get the right information and print the packets in time. I don't care if someone submits something Thursday morning. And as far as, you know, a cutoff for getting the packets out, I mean, the natural time to get them out is, is Thursday evening, because, I mean, I'm not, we're not in on Friday anyway. The agenda's going to be set on Thursday. And so by the end of day Thursday, or the evening, I should say, I tend to work later than staff here. But, you know, at least by the time I leave on Thursday, the board should have the packets. And that gives you Thursday night, all the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday before the meeting. So there's plenty of time to review the packets, I think. So I, I don't want to create too much rules for rules' sake. I think we just should focus on, on kind of getting the packets out on Thursday.
I just wanted to talk about the packet, if I may. We do sign a payroll, and we do sign warrants, and we have to come in and sign them by a certain time period. I feel like, because our meetings are now on Mondays, and I usually like to come in on Wednesday night to sign mine, or, and I've come in on Thursday mornings to sign the payroll or the warrants. I feel like I've had to come in on a Saturday or Sunday to get my packet because it's not, it, it wasn't ready, so now I have to rush to go through all the material. I feel like that our packet should be ready on Wednesday, that Wednesday before our meeting at one o'clock to, so that, or I, or, or sometime in that mid-afternoon so I can, we can come and pick up our packet and go through it. I understand that items could be added like last minute, but it's more efficient if I'm, if any of the board members, if we're coming in and we're signing warrants and stuff to grab our packet. So now we're coming in two or three times and, you know, four times in the building, you know, disrupting business to get a packet. We're coming on the weekends to come and pick up our packet, when it's always been available for us earlier in the town. Had it done earlier, right now it's later than it's ever been. And I just would like to see our packet done by Wednesday afternoon so that when we come in and sign warrants and, and payroll, we can just grab it and not have to come back another time and grab it again to be efficient. I don't like to waste gas or energy if I don't have to.
Mr. Chair, by me?
Mr. May?
This goes back to a conversation that we had a while back. And I believe it was a request that was made by me to see if we could get the ability to sign the warrants digitally, if possible. Yeah, so that, you know, we didn't have to come in. Because I do, you know, in, in part agree with what Candace is saying that when we changed the meetings from Wednesdays to Mondays, we effectively added fifty-two days of the week, fifty-two days of the year that we need to come in here that we didn't before. Because we only technically had to come in every two weeks for the meeting and once in the middle for the things. We added twenty-six by going to another day. And I just think it would be easier overall, since we get the warrant sent to us electronically the, by Amber. It would be, you know, to the efficiency that Candace was talking about, to be able to sign digitally would be very efficient.
There is also the option under the Municipal Organisation Act that the board can vote to have one member sign the weekly warrants or biweekly, however they go. And provided that, that person at the next meeting of the board brace the board on what was in the warrants. But we are getting those electronically from the accountant now. So you already have it. So you could either do the board vote to have some person do it, or we could go to sign it electronically, which has been done in the past, different documents have been sent out. And the thing about that, the way it had been done was, it gets sent to Jeff. It doesn't get transferred, won't move to Lisa until Jeff signs it. So you get, I get notice, hey, you know, sign this. And, yeah, well, you know, I look at my stuff in the morning and then in the evening when I get home. I don't carry phone, I don't carry computer to be tied to it during the day. So that's how that works. And, you know, two, three, four members would sign it, be waiting on that fifth member who may not see it, may be in a way, whatever. And, and now whether it can be set up differently. And, and now whether it can be set up differently, I, I, you know, so you could bypass somebody, go back to it. I don't know, cause I'm. Way, way, way. You would get a reminder, you know, hey Jeff, uh, you know, sign the warrant, you know, blah, blah, blah. I'd be looking at it, yeah, I'll think about it and uh. But, so we had done uh signing the warrant and other documents electronically. So that's an option, uh, designating the board voting on one person. Um, and we're gonna get the warrants electronically anyways, so. Now, you know, to follow the law, I say, yeah, I'll brief the board, but everybody would already have it electronically and.
For me, Mr. Chair, when I get it electronically, I have to print it out, so I like to have the paper copy, so it's, it's easier for me. To space um what I need to do in order to absorb all the information, so. I was just asking to see if I could get the um copy in a reasonable manner, um, I wouldn't wanna give up my rights to have someone else. Sign, you know, to go over everything, I, I like the ability to be able to tag something or something like that. So, um, but I would be loving to be able to not, especially on warrant day, I mean payroll day. We don't get anything electronically, so, but be able to, on those weeks, be able to sign at home would be lovely.
And ironically, uh, as far as coming in on time and, you know, saving people from coming in. The select board meetings originally used to be on Mondays, uh, it was every Monday. And then sixteen, seventeen, somewhere in there, uh, it went to every other Monday. It switched to Wednesdays because they were getting, it was getting to be difficult to get selectmen to come in. And sign the warrants and do their duty, that they said they would do when they ran and gone. So now we're back to Mondays, so it's a commitment to come in, we come in on Wednesdays to sign the warrant. That's, that's part of the job and the packets, you know, you gotta come in on Thursday to pick it up, or you come in on Friday or. Or whatever, but um.
Mr. Chair. So, this is one of those cases where the, the law hasn't caught up to. A practical sense of how things are done. In towns where a majority or even all of the board um work during the day. And I'm just, I'm not telling any secrets, uh, the towns are running the warrants and cutting the checks. Paying the employees without signatures, um, previous towns that I've worked for. Would send the warrants and the payroll, um, they would save them for when the select would had their meetings Monday nights. Which is after when they were running things and only twice a month, and so they would sign, sign these things, with the exception of. You know, one or two retired, you know, um, select board members that would come in. So unfortunately, the, and that's why I think in the, the Municipal Modernization Act, you can designate someone because. At least to an extent, they acknowledge that this is not practical to have working people like yourself to. Come in on a Wednesday, you know, afternoon to, to sign. Um, and so, you know, I guess I would say they, we just need, you know, three signatures if, if. Um, if the board, you know, wants to make sure that a majority of the board has signed before checks are cut. And, you know, we are sending these packets out digitally as well and we're posting them on the website. Um, obviously Thursday is, is, you know, ample time for, for a Monday meeting. I just don't wanna run afoul if, if we, you know, take away a day and a half to get the packets, I just don't wanna run afoul of. Uh, select board language, because I am often a, a big part of creating the packets, I can't. Give it all to Jill because oftentimes there's uh memos to be written or, or, or things for me to put in. And things can get tricky as I bob and weave throughout the weeks. Um, juggling meetings and, you know, also God forbid something happens in, in the morning and I'm not here on time. Um, I don't like running afoul of, of rules. Um, first couple of weeks were, were rough and we weren't getting the packets out on time and. Um, again, I, I, I don't wanna see us create rules for rules sake, I, I enjoy the flexibility and um. You know, Thursday's a natural cut off, cut off for things that I think works well.
I also like to relax some of the, the thing, make it. Easier to do in a little flexi- more flexibles, because. One, we shouldn't try to be micromanaging everything, because when you, and you can look this up, best practices. When, when you have a talented administrator, professional staff in the office. The primary responsibility of the board becomes policy and budget. And if you try to micromanage stuff, then you're gonna try to perfect everything and. You know, gotta do this, 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 this and this and. You, you're, you're gonna miss stuff, you, you're trying to be perfect and there's, there's just no such thing. Again, I wanna trust the, the staff that we have. To get us the stuff in, in, in a fashion so that we have time. Excuse me, to read through it and, and Thursday evening and, and Friday, Saturday, Sunday. To me is, is more than enough time. Again, I, and I also don't want to have such a deadline so early that. Again, if somebody comes in, would be a resident, would be a business, uh. Sorry, uh, we'll be on the agenda for the meeting that's in three weeks, because. We have put this block in there where. You can't get on the agenda now. Again, it, it lined the policy up as, as close as we can with the open meeting law. And again, if we don't have staff, uh, and we just revert to the statute. Uh, which is, the chairs are responsible. It's, it's the gig, uh, you know. I don't always remember or have, you know, really have time or, or whatever, you know, gotta go out of my way, yeah, damn. Gotta go downtown home and sign that, yeah, it's, it's what I signed up for, it's what you donate it for, it's part of our duty, it's part of our job. So, I would just like to have the maximum amount of time available for somebody who wants to get on. To get on and for planning purposes, so you don't. Something comes in, nope, sorry, that'll be on, you know, December twenty-second maybe, you know, it would have closed last week and. Something comes up, you wanna get it on if you're gonna follow the policy, no, can't be there. So, and that business owner would have been a perfect example of missing out on a grant. Because he came in the day after and he would have to wait three weeks, or unless you call a special meeting. And then that just messes up with everybody's schedule e- even more.
Mr. Chair, by me.
Uh, just the staff to, to get it done, and if they say they can get it done. You know, getting our packets by this time, you know, with, with uh. Being allowed to get a call or an email about, can I get this on the agenda Thursday afternoon at three o'clock, two o'clock? Again, it's a, a step process to put the agenda and, and the stuff on it and to gather the information. And, and I think the more time you have to, to look at that and to research it and to get this, gather the stuff together. I think the better it is all around.
Mr. Chair, um, the one last thing I wanna say about this for myself is that. Um, personally, and, and I know, you know, uh, different people have different feelings about it. But for me, um, I like the Thursday uh for the Monday, simply because it. Very much aligns with the open meeting law. So that you, you're not gonna have somebody come in here and say they wanna get on the agenda. And you're telling them, no, and they're like, well, the agenda doesn't technically close for three days, what's the deal? Or four days, what's the deal? I just think along the lines of, you know, don't create rules for rules sake. Uh, the open meeting law has one out there, it works, it's consistent across the board for every community and. Every taxpayer and uh, we should just use it, since it works. Mr. Chair.
Two seconds.
Long before I sat on this side of the table, the intent of this was to get the packet together. The day of a meeting, count back seven days, you had the meeting day and then day minus one, day minus two, till you got to day minus seven. The statute does allow, and it's on the bottom of every one of our agendas, the listing of the agenda items is. Are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, other items. Not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent is permitted by the law. I hate to paraphrase it, but it is the get out of jail free card, the state does understand, things will come up and the case in point. The business that came in, the risk of losing the grant, it was imperative, we get that in front of us. You know, waiting two or three weeks was not to his benefit. So we did the right thing, we worked in favor of the business and we met the letter of the law and the statute, there was. No harm, no foul, in my view.
For, for the agenda item, that, that was. You know, no problem, uh, but as far as getting the packet together and getting it to us, and, and I, I know you know this, just because we're on the board. Uh, we have gotten packets before on a Friday, sent out on Friday afternoon, it's like, who's working on Friday? Or the policy says Wednesday, but at least you, you know, get them by Thursday uh before you leave. Cause it's, it's not right to have an employee, expect an employee to work, you know, from homes after the, the week is over. So.
Or one change on a Saturday where I was going, how did that happen?
Ain't nobody in town all today.
Right.
I went down there, uh, so that's, you know, that was my thought on the, on the packet is uh. The, the agenda were, you know, we were stuck, you know, made by law posting it unless something ends up. And we only have a day for, you know, change that agenda, you know, Monday. Cause the holidays and Saturdays, Sundays and holidays, you. Count towards that, um, and nobody's working on the weekend, so how are you, you know, even going to. You know, expect an employee to post that, so I just, my intent was to give the staff and, and us the greatest leeway to get things on.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm good with page two and page three now that I have the explanations. I'm, I'm good with four. With your suggestions.
Okay, so you, you good with page three?
Yeah, I'm good with three now that you explained it to me, I'm good with your changes, your changes, not my thought, the ones I submitted.
On page four, there was nothing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I mean, so, so this doesn't get too confusing, I mean, should the board be voting?
You wanna do each page?
Well, I guess vote on, vote on the topics, because you might like your page, you might like his page, and a board member might wanna make a modification, it's different than. Um, all of you, and, and then, I, I, I think the, this is my opinion, the best course of action would be to. Um, give me directive on exactly kind of what you're looking for as far as like the. The core things, like, okay, when do we want the agenda, when do we want the packets, et cetera, because then I have. Um, I have some um minor tweaks to just certain like language stuff. That I want to um show the board. It's not, it's not um material things, like, like putting town in front of administrator and um. Spelling out pro tempore, um, and then there was some grammatical things, so I'd like to do a red. Redline copy, once I understand what the board wants as far as the core material goes, and then I'd like to do a redline copy for you. Uh, just for the smaller, like uh grammatical stuff that I found when I, when I went through it. I mean, unless everyone likes everything Jeff did or something, you could vote it that way, but um, you know.
I'm, I'm good, like I said, I'm good with Jeff's changes, I, I, now that, on cha- page two, now that he's gone through it. I, I, I like his changes. I like his changes on page three that have gone through, now that I've, we've had discussion. Um, Jeff's cha- had changes on four and this, this one is based on, I, I understand this, somebody has, this has to do with legal cases. I believe that's why you put the page four one on the decorum discussion one.
So then there is um.
Page six.
Page six would be, and this is how uh the policy had originally read up until this past summer. And I believe, uh, and this would. My proposal would, uh, would remove the part of uh meeting minutes. Uh, taken in person by the staff unless to the event of an excused vacation, unforeseen circumstances, illness. And then may be, uh. I think uh we've seen the minutes uh since uh Ms. Blood has come into the office. Being done by video, T C T V, um, I think she's using A I from.
Yeah, Zoom has like an A I.
Well, however she's doing it, the minutes have become very detailed and. At least as accurate as they were where someone was taking them a- at the meeting. And if T C T V goes down, then. You know, jot down stuff and, and do it the old fashioned way.
Right, cause, cause no one's really taking minutes at this meeting, they're taking notes to write the minutes. So that's, so if T C T V should go down, and apparently they record it on two different platforms, but. Uh, in the event I would, I, I could easily just take the notes as we speak.
And again, I'd, I'd thank the examples of the minutes uh that we've had in the last few meetings. They're uh, they're challenging Mr. Toth with uh the detailed content in the, his minutes versus uh Ms. Blood's, I mean, they've, they've been very detailed. Uh, with, you know, being taken uh off the video.
I mean, I'm good with taking that line out, as long as somebody in the room is, is, is keep, keeping some notes. In case something like we got a blackout or something, we chose to keep on going, even if, you know, the cameras went down.
So, yeah, T C T V says, hey, uh, hit man, it's all stopped, and you can take a break and uh adjust fire.
Yep, we're also required, if we can't fix that in a timely fashion, that's. Very short specified timeframe, the meeting comes to a grinding halt.
If it's not on television?
Yes.
Oh.
It becomes an O M L violation.
Oh, really? That's interesting.
It's the extension of the, the COVID stuff there, that's.
Right, there, there's a twenty minute window, if we can't resolve it in twenty minutes, our meeting is done, and that starts when the, the, when the live feed and stream drop.
In there about, you can go, but they suggest.
They suggest not doing it.
I, I think that's if you have a, if you're opting for a hybrid model, which we, I think we, we essentially allow all the time.
Yep.
So, or remote, please.
That's why it's in our opening mantra for T C T V, let us know if there's an issue.
So my next change would be uh, the responsibilities of the vice chair. Just to, just to clearly state that a vice chair. His real duty is to act in place of the chair during his or her absence at meetings. And should the chair leave, uh. Leave office, then the vice chair shall assume the duties of chairman uh until the board uh elects a new chair.
The only thing about this one I had was I didn't understand the difference between the one in the red and then. And the one in green, when you go from act to the place of the chair, I didn't understand what the difference, I mean, one had more wordage. And the other one, they kind of mean the same, um, and I understood, I understand, um, cause we just had it happen not long ago. Where it was a situation where, I understand adding the should chair leave office, I understand that add-on if. That makes sense, but I just didn't understand, I mean, they're just two, they, they mean the same thing, but they're just different, um. In my, in my mind, they're, they're different, um, one's a shorter version than the other one. Unless, unless I, I, I've tried to figure this out about five different ways, and what the difference was, and I just couldn't get there. Why we're getting rid of what we have in red. Why we're getting rid of what we have in red and putting act in place of the chair during his or her absence at the meeting. That, and I just didn't get the difference. And then should, and I understood the should chair leave office and then the, and the vote part, I got that part. I just didn't get it. I tried.
And I believe that was. And the other thing would be on page 10 would be the eliminate the, uh, engage all of the boards and committees in annual hall boards meeting, uh, for the reasons I already have already been discussed at a previous agenda. I, I just, again, uh, boards, committees, commissions are free to come. While meetings, we're free to go to theirs to discuss and we're free to contact the various chairs uh, to talk about things or stuff. But as a, as a mandatory additional meeting where I have noticed, uh, the, the drop off in, in attendance. Uh, because a- as Mr. May alluded to, there was, it just really wasn't amounting to much and you know, certain elected boards have certain responsibilities according to statute. Uh, if you look up what the, the Board of Health has the authority to do, that would scare you, I would share. The, the Board of Assessors has certain responsibilities, elected duties. The, uh, the Conservation Commission, which is, is appointed, they have, they have a, a state law backing them up, the Wetlands Protection Act. Uh, it's in there, they can even act, uh, if it's a five member committee, they can even act, vote on something with, with only two people. It's a little thing in the law that just, that's, I don't make the rules, I just play it along with them.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to talk about page seven. Um, this is the action, um, item, uh, collection and reporting. Um, so I had been given the action, um, items, but they weren't in tubular format, which I made them into tubular format. The only thing I just, the way I'm approaching it, it's, um, is I'm just doing it as I'm putting the agenda items in and then I'm saying how we accomplished it or didn't, so that I leave what we don't. And my goal is at the end of the year is to take anything that was up on top and just pu- bring it all down in one place if we, the items that we don't. It just, it's easier for me to do. So the line that says an item will be added by vote or a, a co- co- um, consensus of the board or the town administrator, it just doesn't meet the, um, the way that I'm, um, I've approached it because I was not given in, um, in this kind of, um, the way it talks about it will be tubular in format and, um, s- s- um, can't say this word, and, um, sequenced numbers. Um, and the action to be taken purposely, my action tracker meets these qualifications and, and, um, and this is not, I mean, everybody has a different way of doing things in life. It's just that that's not what I was given. So I've made it that, but then I couldn't figure out how to get it to, you know, to the votes and stuff. And it just, for the time it takes for me to do what I'm doing, it's, it's just easier for me to drop the agenda, say this and that. And I thought that my approach, um, was helpful with now having staff. Um, our staff Jill has u- used a couple of things and realized that we didn't have certain things based on my notations that I put in about the minutes and things. So it's just the approach. I, I mean, I had no real, it's the way. So I just would ask that we strike that line because everything's already there that we're working on. So I don't feel like we need to have a vote or we need to have a consensus because we're already do, it's, it's our agenda and it's what we did and didn't do.
If I may.
Yeah.
Mrs. Graves, I respectfully disagree with you. You cannot make any actions without a vote or a consensus of the board on your own accord. That constitutes an open meeting law violation. If that is what you're doing,
No, that's.
you just openly admitted to it, you just openly admitted to it, I will strongly urge you to stop.
Um.
And for your own protection, ma'am.
I, then I don't understand the item that I'm given in charge, the action item collector. I take the agenda, I put it into the action item and then I check off all the items that we have accomplished at, at our board meetings. That's what I'm doing. And that's what I was asking to take the item with, to be added by voter consensus because we, our agenda has already been the consensus that we were working on.
It's not the agenda, it is the items we discuss.
Right. And it's in, on the action gen- uh, action oriented, the, the thing that I'm doing, I'm checking off what we have accomplished and what we don't, and I leave blank, but we have not voted on or done. It's left blank, it's not, there's nothing there. It doesn't have a, it doesn't have a finalized.
You can't close it out until this board discusses it. That is the point I'm trying to drive home. You cannot do that. You cannot act independently in a vacuum or in a silo.
Not acting independently, we.
Jeff said you did.
No, we vote, we voted on, so we voted on, let me use example, something that we voted on. We voted on the warrant, right? So we voted on the warrant the other day, uh, back in, I was the eighth or whatever, and we voted on it. That was an accomplishment. We finished it. It's done. We voted on it. That action for that agenda, that item was done.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, did you, did you see my action? I mean, if I'm doing it wrong, I haven't gone in any direction from this board or asked to tell me to do differently.
I months ago sent you a message that I can't open what you sent.
I resent it again. I, I, I didn't get another thing to say that you couldn't open it again. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I mean, everybody, I mean, uh, Mr. May, I, I know that you've opened it.
I did.
I did, I don't understand what I'm doing wrong.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't either. I think it's just in the explanation because I, I was confused by that myself. Because what, uh, what I saw is she just, the, the item, i- if my memory serves, uh, she went through the meeting and, um, denoted the things that we finished or completed and denoted the things that we did not and that would need to be carried over. They didn't have a completion to them. And, and that was the simple, um, story behind the whole thing is what I got. It was just, you know, denoting whether we did it, whether we didn't do it, it wasn't making any decisions, it wasn't, you know, saying this is not true or this is true. Um, it was just stating what we did and what was left over and what probably needed to be brought back before the board by being blank. By not having a completion to it. That was the.
What she said was not, didn't come out.
It's probably, I probably said something.
I, I, I agree. That's, I was sitting here trying to, yeah.
I'm sorry that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Could have said something back.
Yes, right. Missed it, yes. All right, so, so
Okay.
we're, we're just essentially talking about an ex- an Excel spreadsheet that Ms. Graves is, all right.
Mm-hmm.
So all that really matters is what you vote and decide in these public meetings. The tracker is just a tool for us to keep track of things that we've tabled or directives I was given that maybe has it come back to this vo- board, you know, for example, the, um, the, uh, the foreclosures, that's something you've given me. I haven't brought back to you yet. I'm working on it. Um, but in the event that it doesn't come back, the tracker might be a tool, but hey, James, we haven't heard about this in six months. What, what are you doing?
Uh, and this is on me because it's my, my brain box, but, uh.
So I think what Ms. Graves is saying though is that, um, the policy states that I, uh, then item can only be put on the tracker if the board votes it to be on there. And I think she's going meeting by meeting, which makes sense, and saying, okay, you know, like with, with me with the, um, the foreclosures, that's probably on her tracker, but no one told her, put that on the tracker. She's using the agenda to do it. And I, I think that, I think that's fine. And I don't think there's any violation or anything there. But I think her point is she's, she's taking everything because she's tracking all this stuff via, by meeting, but the policy technically states somewhere, I think, right, that
Yes.
that the board is supposed to vote every item that goes on there.
Right.
So, so it's just a tool to help us keep track. I, I, I think it makes sense to probably take that line out.
I concur.
Oh, um.
The only, I think the only other thing I had was obviously I had, I had done the pages with the, the votes that we had twice each month uh, uh, on a Monday for the business meeting section because we had voted for Monday meetings. And then I had put the dog hearing in, on the, on the thing. And I had added this little piece and I know that we already have a thing for it, but we was, this came from the voter's guide. Um, and I just put it in here, this little piece because, um, um, this is no fault to anybody. It's just that we as select board didn't really, um, I felt that James was, and the staff wasn't, um, understanding that we needed a voter's guide right away. And this was just so that if somebody ever read our, what we do, that by the way, when we do a special town meeting or when we ta- do, um, or we do, um, a regu- you know, the annual meeting, that by the way, there's supposed to be a voter's guide to go with this and stuff needs to be on the town website. Um, we can put that in there or not, but I was just thinking when it came up that it was, you know, everybody trying to teach everybody, it just having it in there might have been helpful when they read everything. That by the way, we had a voter's guy we're supposed to do. And that was, that was only my changes. And then of course I had the page three, but Jeff's is better, so I'm good with that. And that's all I had for changes.
So I, I think what I'm hearing with, with the board, um, uh, no issues or consensus on the changes that's in front of us if we could let the town administrator do what he, uh, said he has, uh, to make a, a red line, ooh, a red line copy and um, show us some of the other things, the grammatical things or whatever that you saw. And have that to us for the eighth and then we can just vote, uh, with that in place.
All right, some, some, I, before you vote, am I u- am I, um, using Mr. Bennett's version, version? And then I'll make little grammatical tweaks to that.
And, and including the, uh, the line takeout of the, uh, the action item tracker that.
Yes.
It's on, uh, Ms. Graves's thing.
And, uh, did we put the dog hearing as a separate item?
That's, uh, that's in.
Is that in yours too? I just want to make sure we don't overlook it by.
It should be under hearings. The, uh, there's, there's.
It was page, it's page fourteen. I, I had put it under fourteen, under the hearings.
But there's, uh, there's the section in here of, uh, what the hearings in the, where that they will be in.
Oh, did you want it on the back section?
I, I, where it is, is important to me is.
It had its.
There.
Yeah.
Yeah, on page four, there's public hearings number seven. So we could just put, uh, the dog hearing part in there.
Okay.
Public hearings, dog hearings will be, like, be separate.
Let's stick a standing on.
Fortunately, we don't have, we don't have many of those. Yes. That is, okay.
So Mr. Bennett's version and then those two, those two items. Okay.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah, I'll bring, uh, on the eighth, I'll bring, um, a red line version for the, for the board to consider.
Thank you.
Got it.
All right, uh, the LCAO, we will be done. So the next item is item H. Uh, from the town administrator, the Assistant Treasurer of Compensation.
Yes, let me, uh, just find it in my packet now. Packet's gotten all confused. Well, I'll begin talking as I look. Um, so this was triggered by the fact that, um, our wonderful Assistant Treasurer, Daniel Kirby, uh, obtained, as you know, because we, we talked about it previously, um, the collector certification. Now, you know, I'm, I'm aware of, um, Massachusetts Municipal Association has several, um, professional organizations, the Treasurer Collector Association, the Managers Association, the Human Resource Association, the Assessors Association, Finance Officials Association, and most of them, if not all of them, um, have a professional designation that you can, uh, work towards. There is nothing like the Treasurers Association. I, I don't know why it is the way it is, but, and I'm not criticizing, so treasurers don't come at me, but the collector certification takes three years and then the treasurer certification takes three years. So she spent three years working towards the collector one, so that's a huge deal. And now she's beginning the next step of getting a treasurer on, which will take three ye- three years. So I wanted to take this as a moment to, um, look at where she is. I wanted to do something for her financially because that's a big deal and we, we want to retain, retain employees who go, go above and beyond. And when an employee, you know, does something like this as well, we don't want to lose them because we, as this board has talked about before, we don't want to pay to train someone and then watch them go be successful in another town. We want them, especially a good employee like her who shows up to work every day and, uh, has a smile on her face and, you know, is pleasant to talk to. You know, gets this, um, big time education thing. Um, we want to retain employees like that. Um, a treasurer who's been here a while as well. Um, you know, I think she's, I'm not gonna put words in her mouth, but I think she's toward the later end of her career. She hasn't given any indication exactly, you know, when she might retire. But I can tell you that treasurer, trained treasurers and collectors are probably the second hardest position to hire for closely behind assessors because assessing is very niche. Um, and you can't go to college to be a treasurer collector. It's just a very, you know, particular thing. So I took the opportunity to, um, do a wage survey, uh, for the area. Um, I reached out to a lot of the towns around us. Um, unfortunately, it was a little limited what I got back. And so I used the Mass Municipal HR, um, listserv and solicited, um, information from towns under, um, ten thousand. Uh, Ips- Ipswich responded, thank you Ipswich, but they got a population of over thirteen thousand. Um, so I, I included them on there just so you could see, but it's not included in any of the calculations. It's why it's a strike through. Winchton's a little over ten thousand, but I included them in this survey because they're a competitor for employees being right next door to us. Um, so they would, because the, the criteria isn't only just, um, population. That's just what I use try and solicit quick from the MMHR listserv. Um, but there's usually a lot of other factors when you dive in deep, but one of them being who are we in competition with? All of, all of our directly contiguous towns, um, you know, we're essentially in competition with. Now, we do have some, um, towns that are close to us that did respond. So like I said, Winchton, Berlin's close, Princeton's close. And, uh, West Boyles is not too far away either. So what I found was, was that the average, if I just averaged out these, I think there's nine of them, one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, not including Templeton. So Templeton's listed in there, but they're not included when I'm doing the calc's because that would just o- obviously bring it downward, so you don't include yourself. Um, the average is twenty-nine eighty-one. Ms. Kirby makes, uh, twenty-six dollars. A seventy-fifth percentile, which is where I like to, in an ideal world, kind of shoot for, being that it's only twenty-five percent of our Cobb towns are paying better than us. Um, that's actually thirty-five, ten. So just as, as sort of a fairness exercise, I then averaged those two together and that came out to thirty-two, forty-six. So as we look at the data, um, weekly hours aren't, aren't as important because it's all, it's all just sort of a, it, it's sort of just, is, you know, if you're full time, you're full time, but towns do it differently. What's kind of important is um, the, the, so the status of whether they're certified or not, um, and obviously years of experience. And what we find is on this list, she's basically the only one who has any of the certifications. Um, and she has, you know, she's, she's been here fi- five years, which isn't a super long time, but it's also, you know, she's seen everything five times. So she's pretty, uh, experienced. And she has experience, more experience than a lot of the people who are making more money than her. Um, and who also don't have the certification. So I wanted to give the board an, an opportunity to consider um, a mid-year adjustment for this employee. I think it's someone we want to retain. Um, I think it's someone we want to have here and I, and I do believe, I do believe regardless, the data shows. Um, that this rather important employee is underpaid compared to her um, peers and we could. Potentially be at risk of losing her at, at some point. Um, you know, right now, having her there, um, we have a good. Uh, transition ability, should Cheryl decide that she wants to retire within the next couple of years, few years, whatever she wants, but. Um, it's good to have a, a trained assistant in place and I want to make sure that we keep her here. And so that's my purpose here today. Um. I am, you know, it's the board's prerogative whether they, they want to do something, nothing, what I'm recommending. Uh, but my recommendation is thirty-two, forty-six an hour, which would be sixty-four thousand dollars a year and that would um, you know, bump her, bump her closer to the middle. Little higher than the middle. Um, a little low, well, slightly higher than the middle.
And also on the side note, uh, town near, near us that borders us is Hubbardston. And their treasurer just, they just gave resignation for in December, I believe. They just had four people.
Right. And a lot of towns do use turnover as, as a um, opportunity to reassess what they're paying. So we could see. See that that position come online as paying, excuse me, as paying more than what was previously, um, what that previous person was getting paid. It's an opportunity for them to, depends how they, like a, kind of grasp at the opportunity, I guess.
Only problem with this, like I don't know where Lanesboro is or Deerfield or, well, Deerfield is out west. Or Titan, I don't, I don't even know where that is.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I agree. Ideally, I would have um, essentially, essentially looked on a map and drawn sort of an oval, because too far north New Hampshire, right? But such a drawn oval, I couldn't get a lot of the towns to respond. I, I wanted to have this to you at the last meeting, but I just couldn't. Get them to respond. I'm not going to do a public records request on my peers. I did reach out multiple times, but there are.
West of us. Yep.
But there are some, some comps on here, Winchton and, and uh, Berlin and Princeton. They're, they're all paying more with less experience, no. No certification, but point, point taken Lisa, for sure.
I looked at Westminster, they had the employee pay for fiscal twenty-four report and. Their treasurer, did they have a treasurer and then they had a collector? But their pay is, she's only making slightly more in twenty-six. What that employee Westminster, which is close to us, they have a regional school district. Is close to what she's making in twenty-six, that, that their collector, treasurer collector was making. In twenty-four. So.
About two years ago.
And again, Hubbardston is, is going to be looking for one. Yeah, I'd be surprised if they haven't already started. Uh, it's a high position to fill. She's certified, so she's shown that she can do the work and has the knowledge and. I just don't want Templeton to be, you know, another position where they came here, got trained, had experience and then. And I don't blame them, but you know, skedaddle for, for the money when, you know, and again. It's not only Cheryl that is, you know, getting close to, if she wants to go, she can go. Uh, the town clerk is in the same position. I, I've spoken with Carol and she's, doesn't intend to go anywhere but. And then there is Lori Weider, the health agent, you know, planning board slash this, slash this. She is. I've got, I've talked with her and she, her, she reminds me of this, you know, there's three people in the building that. She didn't say she was going, but they're approaching that they'll have the time and the age and, you know, they'll have the ability if they want to go, they can go. And. Uh, and this has been pointed out in the um, financial reviews from the DOR back in two thousand and nine and, and in two thousand and twenty-one. About not only cross-training, but um. Working on keeping people like assistants who can transition. To, to a full-time employee when they've, they've done the training and got the certs and, and so forth. And it just. It benefits the town because it's a whole lot cheaper to, to pay them a little bit more to keep them than is to start from scratch. Go looking for someone who's already trained and experienced.
Yeah.
They're not going to come here for less money. They're not going to move for equal money. They're going to be looking for more. So we have someone that's. As experienced, has training, took the initiative, got the certification. Yeah, she entitled to a bonus, but that, that was voted a long time ago. I, I think it's, it'd be a smart move on our part to keep someone who can move into the treasurer collective position.
Yeah, I mean, what we're essentially talking about here is succession planning. Um, I was in Salisbury long enough to see the benefits of, we started doing that. Early on and, you know, year after year, we would see the fruits of our labor by being able to keep someone um, who's not only competent, but good. Um, when a higher up person retires, they slide right in and the municipality keeps moving like a well-oiled machine. And then you get the opportunity to backfill the lower level position and then you get to kind of do the training and the process all over again. So this is what I'd like to, you know, keep going here.
I have an important question. Where does the funds come from?
Good question. Good question.
Thank you.
And at the, at the end of the day, um, this is not budgeted. Um, there would have to be a transfer toward the end of the year. So I, you know, I can't say I magically found funds. The treasurer's budget is tiny. You know, it's just two full-time employee salary plus a small expense budget. So they would likely have to be a transfer at the end of the year to make the budget whole, because it's not, it's not, you know. Several thousand dollars extra in her budget, you know, so we would, we would have to um, do a transfer at the end of the, end of the year.
But as long as we're planning for it, um, then uh, again, it's. It's that word that uh, Mr. May likes to toss out to, planning for something.
Yeah.
And if uh, planning and, and the procedure is in place already for end of the year to plan annual transfers. We don't have no town meeting required. Can they not have town meeting, but the advisory committee and the, and the select board can do it as of May one. We go to the accountant and say, hey, uh, where can we, just like we did uh, to put money aside to buy the electronic voting stuff for. The other town meeting that, that we just had. The way we got those was. Yes, the moderator and the town clerk, you know, looked at it and figured out the system and, and got the cost and everything, but. The town clerk only had about four thousand in, in the budget and to get that, not only in a timely manner. Uh, to get some training on them and to be able to use them at a special town meeting before we get to annual, but. To keep the price from increasing by waiting till, you know, the special town meeting over the next year. Town meeting voted to, to authorize to move that, but then we needed the money. And this board and the advisory committee met and did an end of the year transfer from. The department who the accountant says, you know, I, I have the money, the department, their in-house budget records matched up. And we were able to transfer the money to, to make that work and we could use the same process. Uh, because as long as at the end of the year. When we pay the salaries. We have the money to do it. That's. Track the funds, we may be able to transfer from.
Right.
That would be another success, one hundred thirty-seven dollars a year.
For their budget. For their budget. I do want to say, Mr. Chair, that I think Danielle does a wonderful job. Um, of, of, of all my experiences with her, she's very professional and does a great job.
And again, this is the financial review, DOR is, you know, succession, cross-training, keeping experience-trained employees.
Just, just the chair, if I might. Um, I agree. I, you know, I just double down on what people are just saying right here. I like the succession training. I, I like that very much. Um, I love sitting here um, at, I think it was our last quarterly report. Um, or when we were talking about the uh, uh, tax title issues. And we were talking to the treasurer collector who was sitting up here and Danielle was sitting behind her. And everything that we asked, she was. And, and she, she was on the ball on every question all the way through. And it's the same thing when I go into the office and I ask Cheryl something. You know, I, I see Danielle's head going, you know, one of these and, you know, she's. She's doing her job and uh, seemingly she's doing it well. And she's trying to promote herself and the benefit of the town and. I think if we can keep her as a potential fit for Cheryl, if she so decides to leave. I think this is a small price to pay for a good employee. So I support it.
Again, it's just a little planning thing.
Yes, that full letter word, we don't like plan. Uh huh. Yeah, it's nice to see it starting to happen.
Don't jinx us now.
Oh, wouldn't do that, Jeff, wouldn't do that.
So I.
I would uh.
So I guess if, Mr. Chair, if, if the board is so inclined, um, a motion to um. Change her hourly rate to thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents effective um, Monday, which is um, the December first would be good.
I would move to uh, for the board to authorize a salary adjustment for the assistant treasurer collector. The amount of thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents per hour, uh, take effective December first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any, any further discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Back at the annual town meeting, we had had a discussion and we had a warrant arti- item. To look at having the state accountant come in and doing an audit on the town's books. If the board members recall, we had a Zoom meeting. And we learned, much to our dismay, although we were given high accolades and praises for requesting said audit. That it was outside of the wheelhouse and scope of the state auditor's abilities and it was going to actually be cost prohibitive. But we had monies set aside and the monies that were set aside and earmarked for that audit will more than cover the approximately sixty-two hundred dollar bump up. So I believe we can get this done without an end of the year transfer. But I will leave that to Mr. Ryan to review and look at because that is in the current budget book.
Great thinking, great thinking.
Yeah, it's uh, that was sitting there because when we had that meeting with the.
Yep.
Just the visitor, um, I just brought you her name, but uh.
Yeah, Diana Ziegler.
She, she told us that uh.
Yep.
Nicely, it was good intention, good effort.
Yep.
She'd love to do it, but um. Out of her uh, scope of authority.
I remember her word. She says, I think this is great, but are you guys crazy? Nobody ever asked the state auditor to come in and look at your books. Yeah, here we are. We're asking for it, please.
Yeah.
So uh, the, the money, I believe, is available and we can actually access it. It, it, again, it may require us getting together with advisory just to make sure we're doing this legally and moving it account to account. But I, I think it's.
I could cha- I could talk with the accountant.
Yep.
I, I believe that number was twelve-five that we had put aside.
Twelve-five or uh, one thousand two fifty, yes sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, twelve thousand five hundred.
I think that's what it was.
So, yeah, so the money would be there at the end of the year.
So we did your job, James. We just found the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I can go back to sleep now.
We'll wake you, uh, no.
Yeah.
The way we're going to do it. So uh, on the motion. On the motion and uh. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.
Congratulations, Danielle.
The next item on the agenda is, this is left over from last meeting. It is for, we had a reconsideration of a vote that we took place on. October twenty-seventh. Uh, it involved um. Reconsidering is the vote, previous vote of the board that uh, we voted to transfer a police vehicle to EMD. There was a request by two board members asking for a discussion, reconsidering that vote. That is per uh, operating procedures, uh, which is guided in part by Robert's rules, which uh. The motion was made by Mr. Toth that was seconded and the board, boarded, uh, voted uh. To reconsider and. Then there was a question of, which that actually became the agenda item is what to do with the uh, with the vehicle. To surplus it, to transfer it, uh, or whatever. But in the end, the board uh, voted, we would uh, move it to this meeting. So. The police cruiser again is in front of us, uh, for our decision to, you know, what we do with it. The procedure for uh, disposing of or surplusing is in the financial management policy on page twenty-nine. There's any question on. You know, that, that police vehicle being uh. Decommissioned and, and available for surplus transfer, et cetera. I had asked the police chief about, you know, new officers and how much they would cost and stuff, and I asked about that police vehicle being. Taken out of the service if that had any effect on his uh, ability to patrol and stuff. And he said, no. So uh, he said that's been decommissioned, you know, the, the, the police department and chief. And it's at the highway department waiting on what we're going to do with it. And some of the, I think for the reconsideration, some of the recent stuff, stuff that was talked about was. Buy new police cars, rotating buses out and, and getting new ones to, in an attempt to reduce the maintenance budget of, of the town. Uh, by keeping the older vehicles, we're just uh, increasing the cost uh, of. Ensuring those vehi- those, those vehicles or items, uh, registering them, the inspection fee, uh, just the fuel cost alone. That highways responsible, highway department's budgets responsible for VPW, public service, whatever you want to call it. Then there was also the maintenance of the older, the older vehicles, which. To me makes uh. The point move of buying new equipment if you're going to keep the old stuff. You, you're not. Going after your goal, which was, I thought originally, the point that I made of it was try to reduce the maintenance costs. Uh, regarding our vehicles and not having vehicles that aren't, aren't dependable or. Getting to their uh, their time when they're, they're going to cost more to operate than, than not. So it's a decision of the board. uh, what we do with it. You, you know, we wanna keep it, we wanna transfer it, um, to another department, or we want to, uh, circle, say, and get it off our books.
Mr. Chair, I just, I, I had a, this brought up some questions, um, for me, um, a couple of things. We know that, um, the, um, fire chief and the, the emergency management had talked about wanting to have a vehicle, um, that the, um, emergency management, uh, two thousand and ten Ford Explorer will be decommissioned, um, and probably possibly go into, um, because it won't be able to get another inspection sticker. And, um, I looked it up and that blue book is four thousand one hundred and fifty-four to six thousand two hundred ninety-one. Now, we have the police vehicle, which is a two thousand and eighteen, and that blue book is eighteen thousand five, uh, fifty-four dollars to twenty thousand eighty-three seventy-three, which is an eight-year difference. Um, and I understand our goal is not to have older vehicles on our, um, on our radar and for maintenance costs. Um, but I'm trying to figure out what our plan is for the smaller vehicle needs that our town has, like the, uh, border health vehicle that's in the parking lot that's used by, um, select board has used it to go places, the assessors put their thing and use it. Um, the senior center had just gotten not long ago a police vehicle, one of the police vehicles, um, to use for their stuff. And I'm just wondering, what is our goal plan on some of these vehicles that, uh, how, how will we afford? Do we have like, are we gonna be saving? Uh, are we gonna be getting a loan and how to, to do this? Because right now, um, we're gonna be down a vehicle possibly to use to, um, cart around our electric signs. Um, and possibly do some various inspections or whatever the fire chief said, um, and we'll be down that vehicle. And I was just wondering what our, what our goal is gonna be like moving forward? If we, if we give away a two thousand and eighteen vehicle that's in good condition, um, and we've lost another vehicle we can't have, I understand it's not right now a great idea to, to do it, but at the same time, we don't have, it costs sixty, some sixty-one thousand dollars to, to, um, to get another replacement vehicle, new. And we, we're getting sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, if this vehicle goes into an auction, you, you're, you, you're not guaranteed to get blue book value, it's whatever the auction brings in. Um, this isn't gonna be a trade-in situation, even in a trade-in, you, maybe you would get the eighteen, maybe you wouldn't. Um, and so, I'm just concerned on what our plan is for these lesser vehicles that we have. When we give up something like this to replace something old that we're getting rid of or be down a vehicle, I understand that the whole emergency management, they can take any vehicle. I mean, and then that's the whole key thing, like, um, you know, if they're in emergency and every vehicle was called out, which vehicle they're gonna use? And then what, um, or if there is a vehicle, how are they gonna get the keys, you know? So there's the thoughts that I was just thinking about this, this, you know, when we make this decision, if we're just gonna put it in the auction block or if we hold on to the two thousand and eighteen and use it, maybe for, may- maybe not for the emergency management that has no budget, but maybe the fire chief that could use it for the, the causes that he needed it for with the emergency management. Um, until we can figure out how to purchase these smaller vehicles. But I understand the whole cost of maintenance and we need to keep our budgets down, but I'm just concerned that we can't really afford these new items.
He said insurance and everything like that. Now, if, uh, emergency management, if we transfer this over to emergency management, we have him decommissioned the two thousand and ten that he has, that's on sort of the scrapyard anyways. You know, would that be something worth considering, worthwhile? It's like, that way you're not increasing your insurance payments, but, you know, not adding another vehicle to it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, okay. Let's get back to why we started doing the re- the police op or the police vehicle. We started doing the six-year rotation specifically to cut down on maintenance. Specifically to cut down amazements. Now we're giving these vehicles away to comfort, to departments who never had vehicles before. Who'd already have other vehicles, as you mentioned, emergency management already has a two thousand seventeen Explorer. That they can tell things where they have, um, the, the old ambulance also. Um, that's utilized for mostly cert benefits. Um, so, y- you know, we can say all this about, you know, this, this group with a car, this group with a car, this group with a car. But the thing that we're not asking is does giving the car to emergency management justify the thirteen or eighteen thousand dollars? And the implied repair costs that go along with it? Um, for what purpose, I would ask. Um, because I, I don't see it myself. Under the, under, according to the law, we're not responsible to supply emergency management with any vehicles. Um, I think, uh, we've had some, let's say, excessive, uh, use for vehicles. Personally, and, uh, the cost to the DPW budget, um, is excessive. And, uh, it gets away from the purpose of the six police vehicles on a rotating schedule. Um, it just gets us back into the same rotation that we're in before. Um, heading us down the same road we were in before we started this. Um, and I personally disagree with it. And I would also like to mention that when, um, just for technical terms here, but when, uh, during the last meeting, uh, member May recommends they put this on a future agenda and set it for surplus or auction. And that was what was to be put on this agenda. So the option to transfer it to somebody else doesn't seem to be there.
The agenda item is called disposition and disposition means transferring property or money, so.
They did write the agenda.
I know, but I'm just saying.
The motion.
I know, but we, once again, we're back at a, a, a gender item that was listed as dismiss, um, disposition.
So, so Mr. May, if I, if I may, um, yeah, but, um, so what, so what, what's the nuance you're getting at? Like, eh, if you wanna auction the vehicle off, you can do that. I mean, it's, I would say it's within the four corners of the agenda item, it doesn't have to, the agenda item doesn't have to say all of your options. It just needs to be a notice to the public that we're gonna be discussing something, getting rid of, doing something with this vehicle that is no longer being used by the police department.
Right.
So if you'd like to make a motion to auction, I think that'd be fine, or whatever. As long as it's not, you know, turned into a, you know, something that's not car-related, I guess. Like to turn it into a house, you know, you don't think that would work.
Uh, regarding, regarding the cost and, and what you might get in the auction, generally in the auction, you, you put a a reserve, if you will, and if that's not met, you can refuse to sell it and even, and put it out and try again. The police department, I mean, excuse me, the fire department, um, they got a utility pickup from the state grant a couple of years back for seventy-something thousand dollars. Uh, moving the electronic signs around, uh, DPW building and grounds, they have, have access to a lot of pickup trucks to move them around, which is pretty much how they get around now anyways. And I don't know if anybody, how many people looked in the bay when we had our number third meeting at the Templeton Fire Station, there's a EMD vehicle and I emailed, uh, I emailed the fire chief, uh, about that vehicle being parked there and I, and I thought at one time he stated that there was one ambulance parked in Baldenville where all the full-time people stay. And there was an ambulance parked at Templeton Center for the on-call, for DM people, uh, to get to quicker. Uh, and is, so I asked about this truck being parked, the EMD vehicle being parked in the bay. Uh, in, instead of an ambulance being there, and he said, we currently house both ambulances in Baldenville. My current full-time and on-call staff, it makes more sense for both ambulances to be in Baldenville. Create an opening at the Templeton Center to house the rehab truck. It doesn't stop us from moving an ambulance back to Templeton Center. We have a building for EMD, has three bays, three doors outside. I'm ju- I'm thinking that they're having to park that one vehicle in Templeton Center Fire Station because they don't have room in the building that they occupy. I, uh, that's my conclusion. Uh, I didn't ask that specifically, but it, I don't know why you would park it there. Uh, if all your ambulances and mostly fire trucks that go on house fires are in Baldenville, if you noticed, uh, the Templeton Center Station was more or less like the forestry stuff. In part because I believe some of the newer apparatuses, they don't fit in that, that building because that was built back in the sixties. So, as far as getting, you know, the, the enough money in the auction that you, that you'd want, it's, you put a reserve on there and if it's not met, and it's done in auctions, all kinds of stuff. Uh, if the reserve's not met, sorry buddy, uh, your bid wasn't high enough, you don't get it, or you can, you know, let it go, uh, auction it, try auction it again. Uh, for doing inspections, uh, I know the fire chief goes out on some, he has his chief's vehicle. They have a utility vehicle bought from state grant to do inspections and stuff like. So, and, and again, as Mr. May said, the target of this and the ins, uh, installation of, or the proposal, the town meeting that ultimately passed about the meals tax was to pay for the lease of, of new crew, the first three years was gonna be a three-year lease for a police cruiser and three-year lease on a, uh, one ton for the highway department. And in the little flyer that they put out, that if you pass this, the meals tax money would be used for capital items, did not say vehicle specific, it said capital items and, uh, so that's how that came about. That money just goes into the general fund right now. Uh, it did cover the leases for the first three years and then it just, it's in the pile. So, and this is why we get paid the big bucks to make this decision, like, do we, do we keep this, uh, vehicle or do we put it out to auction and follow what I was, I would refer to as a plan, uh, to move all the police vehicles around, cause at one time I think they had like nine or ten police cruisers. And I jokingly had said a couple of times that, yeah, you have to have that many. Cause when one breaks down, you just go get another one so you can keep patrolling. And, and the whole object of the plan was to cycle them through so we could get down to a manageable number and reduce the maintenance costs. And, and, and not increase the, the maintenance budget of the DPW, cause that's, you keep the older stuff, it's, that's where we're going. And if we keep keeping the old stuff, we're not gonna get to the point where we can buy a smaller, newer vehicle. Uh, one of these days, maybe electric stuff will get around and maybe, I don't know, we can implement the, the green community grant to try to help buy, you know, some smaller vehicles like that. Uh, but right now it's, uh, it's this police vehicle. Again, we add more vehicles to a department that has a budget of two thousand dollars. So that, uh, the operating cost and all that stuff is falling on the DPW. Which is, he already mentioned that this twenty-six budget, his budget and his budget whole was, was reduced and it was gonna push train on. And they all, keep in mind, the fire and, and, and here's the problem with all these new vehicles, especially with diesel engines. You now gotta buy drums of diesel exhaust fluid, which is expensive.
I, I had a little bit of a question, um, just to, um, just to write, to talk about. So if we, they get rid of that one and then we don't, we, we suppo- you, we put this in the auction, um, based on what you said, they don't need to have one, but they, and based on what Tim has, they can use any vehicle in town. Um, just like the one, the vehicle for the border health where the assessors is using it too, um, is there one of the vehicles where they be, like, when they get down to no, like, say they had no vehicles or, or they needed a vehicle? Would there be an assigned said vehicle that would be the one that you call and say that's the key one that you're looking for? Uh, situation like they do with the border health one or, or are they just gonna be down the truck that they supposedly say they need? Like meaning we already have one in the stock and we're, but they, they borrowing for that emerg- emergency event. That they don't use their own personal vehicle like parked on the side where they're doing some kind of traffic, whatever it is they do, that they're not, you know? I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, one, that your, your, your comment seems to conflate EMD or emergency management with cert. Um, because, um, in, in these vehicles listed as emergency man- management vehicles, but they seemingly from the discussions are mostly used under cert parameters. As you can see from the statement that was stated by the chief that the EMD vehicle listed up at the East Templeton Station is generally used for rehab, which comes under the cert criteria, if I'm not mistaken, not emergency management. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to, uh, put the two thousand eighteen, uh, decommissioned police vehicle, uh, up for auction uh, at the next available auction date.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? And I vote yes, five yes. At nine fifteen.
Thank you.
Next item, item J, uh, the MART appointment.
It's Mr. Chair, um, so previously you had appointed, um, uh, Ryan Brown, who works at the senior center as your MART representative. Um, I had a conversation with her to see if she'd, uh, be interested in giving that up so I could sit on the board. Um, I sat on the equivalent board for Salisbury for seven years over, um, in Haverhill, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transportation Authority. And, um, she agreed that it would probably be better served if I sat on the committee, um, as the, as a town representative. So, we're just looking for a motion for you to appoint me as the MART representative, representative.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint James Ryan as the MART representative for the town of Templeton.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on, on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, I look forward to the extra meetings.
They're mostly online.
Remember you did ask.
Yeah.
Item K. Senior center donation. This is, uh, this is regarding a new, uh, a new group, uh, since the Friends of Templeton elders has basically gone away. Serving our seniors, um, as the memo of back east states, uh, they had their first fundraising event. They raised, uh, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And they were, this group is looking for, for us to vote to accept the proceeds, uh, for the senior center donation account.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the donation of six hundred and sixteen dollars from the, uh, from the group, uh, the Friends Group serving our seniors.
Second. Second.
I'd like to thank them.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Support our seniors. I'm only a sophomore according to, uh, our shine director, but I'm working on it. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves? Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I have one, uh, one comment about that donation.
That is the last item on the open part of our meeting. Uh, we're now in member comments. Mr. May?
I'm good.
Ms. Graves?
Um, yeah, I had a couple of things, um, let's see, um, a couple of residents came to me and they were looking for a few items um, that we traditionally put on our town website. They were looking for the town, um, um, our different contracts for our employees, the town administrator, the accountant, and the executive assistant. Um, and I didn't know what to tell them, um, and then, um, I guess traditionally we also put, um, I guess we put them traditionally on our town website that people asked about it, and I didn't know what to say about that. Um, and someone pointed out that the hours of the select board office were different than the ones we voted for. Um, it says on the town website that where our offices are eight-thirty to four-thirty Monday, I mean, uh, Tuesday through Thursday. Um, but the Monday one is, is the way it is we voted, so if there's going to be any kind of correction on that, it's not based on what we had voted for this past, um, summer. Um, those were those two things, um, that I just wanted to comment on that were brought to my attention. Um, I just wanted to also, um, just mention that, um, um, it came up. I was watching a meeting and they talked about that conference in January for the MMA, and I was looking through the budget book and I was just like, maybe someone could look into it, because I couldn't find any real funding other than fifty, fifty dollars to pay to go to that, so, um, that was another thing. And then I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Um, I hope everybody has a safe, uh, wonderful holiday with their friends and family, or, um, if they need a friend or family to reach out to somebody, um, but I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Toth?
Quick shout out to the Templeton Lions Club. The Christmas tree sales are up and started. I noticed yesterday morning on my way into work, they were up there, the, uh, lights were on and folks were walking around with the coffee cups and the tree sales have already begun for the season.
Better kill the turkey before I buy a Christmas.
They were all pardoned. You can't kill a turkey. Is Bear gonna settle for turkey? He likes fried rib.
I don't really have anything, just stay safe Thanksgiving, that's it.
I'm torn, um, Thanksgiving is coming up, um, I hope everybody has a good one. I hope, um, people, uh, consider, uh, when they're meeting, uh, wherever you're going, meeting family, friends, et cetera, whoever you see, all of your thing is, uh, consider, uh, time, uh, the big guy, your time is up, you've been recalled, uh, and most importantly, uh, I wish my best, uh, to the Machete family. Not that it's ever a good time for that to happen, but, uh, I just I don't know how their Thanksgiving will go. I am going to, uh, remember Frank, uh, for what he did and my last little conversation with him. I'll, I'll remember that forever. So on that note, uh, we have an executive session scheduled, so at this time, I move that the board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police local one fifty-five union and dispatch local one fifty-five A union. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the chair so declares. The board will reconvene in open session only for the purpose of adjoining the meeting. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
No.